You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the town of Swansea.
Yeah, Victoria Ains?
Here.
It's like, uh, it's like our, can you hold it in? You and me, okay. All that Steve alone?
Here.
Here, Michael's gonna go open it. See Steve working. And let's see. Our agenda this evening, an application for public hearings, planning board number two-three-dat-zero-two-zero at the site time review for Bay Hill Road. That has been continued or if necessary, continue it until our December fourteenth meeting. The networking has done it, so we should kind of continue that motion. Uh, under discussions and other business, we have TC Legacy, preliminary review, solar update, reading problem being added, and many other businesses with made a big wonder. So let's see, first of all, let's, uh, go to the approval of the minutes for October twelve. Our motion to approve December twelve. Motion by Richard Lane to approve the miss-
Second.
Second by Brandon Self, adjourned for the discussion, any discussion?
Thank you.
And all those in favor?
Alright.
All those votes. Okay, and we don't need a regional impact. So the first thing we need would be a motion to continue Hill Road, planning board number two-three-dat-zero-two-zero, to our December meeting on December fourteenth.
So move. We have the request.
That works. But if what Scott's proposing to is something that one wants to pursue, which is turn this area into the business district two, the lot that would be included in that as well is this one or that one besides the building.
I have no idea.
Yeah. So it's just another way of looking at that would be specifically village business district two. I can go back.
So this lot here. Right, right across the parking lot, I'm pretty sure that they had the drainage. School isn't in it. That probably doesn't mean. Small lot there.
Can you explain again why that the one in the lower right is discontinuous? Yeah.
Was showing.
Oh, great. It was a mistake. Yeah.
It's actually that.
Okay.
That's where the old building over there.
Okay, so that that would necessarily be part of it.
It would be.
It would be because there is multifamily on it?
It's yeah, they could put the dwelling inside, they probably would. On this side of the road here. They are not in the zone anymore.
But can we can we do that? Have a separate, a lot that's separate from the rest of the zone?
Oh, we can.
You're standing like that?
It's that way because that was time that was a manufacturing business going on, a woodworking business. We're afraid we really were.
And so that's not spot zoning to have just that one spot?
Spot zoning, but it was for purpose because when Village Business District was put in there, operating business, so that went along with that. So it's not gonna be a business anymore.
Same with. How big is that far? Yeah, it's like half an acre maybe?
That's good. It's too light says.
You can do something.
He has been putting up this, worrying about this because the problem is just has, we have a zone that is residential, so the village business one, and he can't do anything with it. But once we corrected the metrics to show that it's supposed to be village business, it's just one, sorry, not one. So that's what. This is just one.
Yes, we left that completely, didn't we? Yeah, they left it up. They could go get a variance. In the, in the village one.
Oh.
Residence, uh. It's on there.
You leave that one, you have village district one. And you would do a lot.
Well, no, you leave it one and that necessarily can't. Because there's no multifamily in Village One. It has, isn't that? If you put a whole family there, you got to set together and get the approval.
Unless we want to date to those businesses.
Village two then.
That's what I'm saying. You would be able to put a multifamily there.
And then we want the, and if it's two. The same multifamily.
Then if you made his lot there too.
Lot.
My slot down there.
This one?
Yeah.
What about?
Two.
Village two. Yeah, anything that's Village One, just go to Village two. Sound broke or. And you were down on, just the, you could just throw shit like that.
It was all falling down. It's like the water pumps are seeing that people. The fire can't.
So that's for both of us.
Do that. Yeah. Yeah, that makes sense, correct.
Well, that's.
And again, that would, some of the uses that are allowed in Village two, we'll put them under special exception. Then the manufacturing facility, research and testing lab, utility generation, wholesale warehouse and storage facility.
There's one and two around.
So what's the verdict? What should we do?
Can you tell me? Can you do me a big favor and just read through the ones that you're, the purposes? I just can't keep up with you, the purposes that are you're proposing to convert to special exception. It's on page thirty-two in this one.
So let's see, the uses in Village Business District two.
Yeah.
Right now, what you can do with it is cover a lodge, education, government or religious facility, indoor auctions, manufacturing facility, suggesting goes to special exception, professional business or corporate offices, personal service shop or service establishment, printing and publishing establishments, recreational facility, research and testing laboratories, and suggestion go to special exception, resale business establishments, telephone and internet sales, utility generation, special exception, wholesale warehouse for storage facilities with office repair and customer service areas, special exception. Such for uses which are critically incidental for the uses that you're in, restaurant, retailer and banker financial institution, function hall, multifamily dwellings, home operations, home base business. If we do this, and the other thing we, you will need to do is you'll need to bring over the, the density definition for multifamily from business one and put it in business two because that carried under both of them. There wasn't a special or a separate density violation for business two. It was all the same, so that should be carried over. We're gonna do it in business two, so density requirement would be. It's eight. Here we are. Yeah, multi, multifamily dwellings, this would be carried over, the density requirement for a multifamily dwelling shall be one acre for the first dwelling unit and one half acre for each additional dwelling unit unless connected to public sewer. The maximum density permitted for a multifamily dwelling connected to public sewer shall be eight units per acre.
And that would be permitted?
That would be the permit. Unless it's changed to six units.
So you want village business district to be eight units per acre or you want village one? Six?
No.
So that's just the whole thing, we're moving it from Village One. Always there, we need to accommodate the ones that are there, I think anyways. But yeah, I have to pay density on it, like one, going down. I think we're out of, yeah.
We supply the water for us?
Well.
The rolling doesn't do well?
No public water. No, that's public water, they are.
If they were ever to take and convert them, to handle something like that, they wouldn't be able to do it then because you're gonna be exceeding what the, the water company can do now.
They might, yeah, the water comes down here. It goes around there, but nothing to use over here at all. So there are few of these houses here that are on, the school is on it, we have these houses here. So yeah, the capacity issue I was talking about in the last meeting, what this means is they don't mean that it's water supply capacity. What that means is it's, it's the, the tank capacity. They have a ten thousand gallon storage tank over there. So that's the capacity issue. The state has regulations that, uh, there are so many users on the system, you have to have so many gallons of capacity. So they're reaching that limit over there. Plenty of water to pump, wherever they want to pump over there, but it's that storage capacity. So if someone who's like that and don't want to be drawn there or somebody else, they can give some money to the Western Water Company to bring up tank. If they are capacity, unless they decide that they.
Can you speak to what's going on at the mill right now? I feel like I don't have a.
There's, there's nothing going on there. There's a new owner there. There's been a few, and I think this is the third one. But from what I understand, this owner here, um, investors, I guess is what they are. They've done this thing before, taken old buildings in Massachusetts that they, I don't know if they need to match or not, maybe. They want to, they have, okay, so they have converted.
To residential?
To either condos or. It's not a different.
Like the colony building in Keene.
Under there.
Okay, and does this seem like a likely thing? In Swansea? First of all?
Yeah. First of all, you can say yes, but that really, like Scott's saying, it depends on.
That too.
Is it wastewater that's a problem with the domestic water?
Uh, both actually. The domestic water has a capacity problem and wastewater too is a capacity problem. But domestic is a capacity problem just because of the size of the storage tank over here. And the wastewater problem is, um, because the state has put on regulations year after year on all these plants in the town. The, the design flow of this plant down here is a hundred and sixty thousand gallons a day. So that plant down there is between sixty and seventy thousand gallons a day. So you think you have almost a hundred thousand gallons a day extra free flow there. And you would if you didn't have to treat for phosphorus and it looks like they may be having to treat for and the P box hasn't come up yet because they haven't found a laboratory just one yet. But those are all on the horizon, so that limits. You can only treat the phosphorus and meet the, uh, I think it's one milligram per liter, which is one part. For that, seventy thousand a day. Then you can't go any more, until you figure out how you're gonna treat. Say a hundred thousand. It's a capacity issue only because of the treatment and the regulations, not because of.
And solutions, how far on the horizon do you foresee those to be?
Solutions are, those are the solutions. There are things that can be, can be done, but it's very expensive to do it. Things work all the time and all like what I'm, but horizon wise, let's see, um, treatment wise, you'd be looking at probably five years, I would guess, my intuition. They'll be able to do a few things. Keep going, but they're going to be changing the process. This is a lagoon system down here. He is an active lead at Sledge. So they can do easily a hundred thousand gallons a day, more than that. So that's a type of treatment. So if they decide to go with a combination of flood or you would have that. Again, that's, that's a lot of money, that's a lot of building.
But our investors at the mill are going to base their decision on available capacity. So they, they're gonna sit tight for any other five years? You got it?
I don't know. They, you know, they would probably contest it. They'd get their own engineers. Or they'd say, well, we'll begin stuff. A lot for the treatment that they give us ours, see that size of that is probably gonna be about the size of probably where Steve lives there. I don't know if that many, ninety, that's ninety, were you?
Yeah.
Yeah, so those are, those are three thousand gallons a day. So that'd be at least three thousand gallons a day out of that one, maybe. Depending on how many are there. So they have to have the engineer say, well, can you do three thousand gallons a day? Kind of be decided everything engineers. The water capacity, again, same thing, engineers say. So they, and they may not want to wait five years, but they may have an alternative to say, well, this is better.
That's one reason why the town has refused to buy a lot of companies because it's gonna take a long while. People will screw with off the money.
They, they don't pay much for it, probably.
There's so much, there's so much upgrading yet, it's unbelievable.
So in terms of making planning decisions regarding the mill, um, we, we really don't know what's gonna be happening. Yeah, oh, yeah, for sure. Yeah, but, but my first thought was, well, you know, if residential is going into the mill, as, as I was surmising you're saying, then it makes sense that we'd have multifamily in this. I mean, that's, that felt like a compelling reason to make the changes that you're talking about. Not that there aren't other reasons, but, um, that makes sense to me, but we don't really know. We're not gonna know for a while.
We won't know. It looks like it's leaning that way. That's what's happening. They end up being residential. So I suppose if we wanna see something go in there, we'll believe that.
That particular one too, I mean, the parking lot is very small, so that's about, you can't go in it. Can't be a shopping center really because lack of pocket.
They've got a lot across the street.
And it puts a point nine eight, it's not one billion. Well, you know, they have. Have some of those that are small.
But you need shoppers for that.
Most likely.
I would say so.
Get back to zoning change there. Should we pursue the village business two zone?
I think that makes sense. I do.
Toy Swansea.
Yeah, zone.
Yeah.
So then, if that's the case, we probably have to streamline it a little bit, you know, lots off that we're talking about there. Staying at the end. It doesn't really need to be. See, if we're gonna do that. I guess, oh, yeah, if we do, Brandon, you said that, but it's somewhere on the side.
Yeah, I believe that there's three apartments in there. There could only possibly be two though.
I think you're right, people say you have a yellow one.
It's, yeah, next to the Smith's old house, so the Smith's when I was growing up anyway.
So this, yeah, that's a multifamily too, I think. They're in residential, we don't need, we're then back in the district there, so I suppose then leave it exactly as it is. Probably remove that lot there, probably remove those lots there. They don't need to be. Right here in the southwest of there. And there, and there, and he goes in there and lock it. That and Village two. So tweaking it, should we bring the density down to six units per acre?
I think we should.
I think so too. It's a small area there.
Yep.
Yeah.
So we gotta bring the multifamily density description from village business one and tweak it to allow eighteen minutes per.
Sixteen.
Per acre and use it for village two. Also, again, like I said, um, read down what we're allowing in that two. Should we put anything else on special exceptions? Now we have the manufacturing facility for exception. We have research and testing lab, special exception. Making special exception, wholesale warehousing and storage facility, special exception. Then off on thirty, page thirty-two, starts on thirty-two, it goes to thirty-three. So there's a bunch of stuff and, and it was put on there, all of these, these uses were put on there specifically for that mill. And we don't know now. Market place, but.
Do we have the parking capacity for item R function halls?
Um, if we don't, I mean, it depends how big the function hall is.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if that should be a special exception.
That's taking care of what the zoning and what the site plan is, you know, if it's allowed to use a function hall, but they don't have the parking, then they'll be able to do it or size down that function hall.
Well, this lot, this also. There's a lot of that.
Yeah.
They're being concerned about how you know this is the area as well as one. Same here.
Yeah. Yeah, they, it builds, you know, they don't, you're right about that.
What is the future plan for some, school, once it's gone?
We, we don't know yet because it's, we don't know for probably two to five years whether we're gonna be buying or not. So. So.
That's the school.
But, but I think at least, uh, which is hit on something. Eventually the county will probably own that.
And the whole building?
So we have to look forward to what we want that zone has, what we do, we think, all there. Talking about, I know we're talking to Sledge Board about senior housing or town offices or it's done a lot like this up there, so. Maybe not right now, but we ought to think, be thinking of how we want that zone.
Yeah, but hold off, I mean, you're saying hold off this zone until.
Well, they, they don't know what they wanna do with the building yet, if they get it. I mean, it's a, it's a complicated process to turn the old school building.
Well, they have it exempted. The town's still under, they're exempted, they sell it. And they're not.
But we have to realize too, it may not be sold today. Complicated processes, just not slammed down.
Well, it seems to me that we're trying to do zoning that affects the entire village community by parcel by parcel. And I don't think.
You're spot zoning?
Yeah.
Well, if you want these spots only, if those, um, uses didn't already exist, they already exist, so.
But okay, right now, right now, the school is a school. Okay? In five years, it may not be. It may not be tomorrow night, and my God forbid, have a fire. We don't know when, we don't know why, we don't know how. But we were talking about, what are we going to do five years from now with that parcel? And that to me is spot zoning.
So you're saying not include it, village two?
No, no, because, you know, you gotta have Joseph, Joseph and the Rainbow Coats, uh, Jack.
We add it to village two, that won't be fun, huh? But it is this time?
We don't know what it will be in five years, what the proposal is. But, you know, no, no.
The town may be accepting to do what they want to please, but what if the town doesn't buy it? What if a private person buys it? I think he won't know what he could do with it, but he goes to buy it.
Well, he'll know.
He'll know when he, he'll know what, what it is when he buys it.
If he's flooded by it.
Yeah.
My thought process on this, I don't wanna see something like that get put into a situation like Plankton.
Oh, exactly. I agree with that.
Yeah, if, we're in a situation now where we're writing amendments for the business district one, North Swansea, where that wouldn't be allowed under, you know, if this all passes in March, they wouldn't be able to do that. Excuse me. I don't want, I wouldn't like to see the town put in a situation where, okay, somebody's bought it and in, say, January of April or May. And then we decide, well, we're gonna change the zoning, but they've already come in and they're putting together a stuff that we can't do anything about it until March.
I explained that, that, that's what I was thinking about too.
That piece of property would be prime for a, a big apartment building because it's town water and sewer.
But we have the density there, so let's see.
Yeah, what is that for acreage?
Well, I don't know, I don't exactly where, what is the, the Brown Memorial Field written back to me, so when was that line?
Well, it showed it right. Well, when he had it up in the second again.
It can't be a much more than an eight.
What, the whole building?
One point nine six.
One point nine six.
Soon that is basically the school itself.
What are they, what's the size of Plankton?
Two point five, but that was built before we changed it.
They were talking about going by the twenty twenty. And we're changing regulations.
Yeah, and we're changing, we put, if we actually did put it in village two, we'd change that one to six. That means they could put almost maybe twelve units in that, knowing that they want to private. And if the town can get it, it's not gonna let it go.
So if it remaining, if it remaining residential, they could still put multifamily in there, but it'd be six units, just as we've changed the density.
So the mosh will be with you tomorrow.
No, six.
Six, one point nine six, they could probably get a special exception.
It's three units per acre, in multifamily, it's three units per acre in a residential district. And they're in residential right now, so if it's six units, village two is gonna be the same thing, six unit. Now, that might cause a problem with. Sure, they did one. They got two condos and stuff, yeah. But I think they keep it a six, I'm just saying that it, it's not gonna matter density wise, if the state is residential or if it goes to village two, it's gonna be residential, it's gonna be the same one. For that, yeah.
No, so Plankton can't have. Check in my head, it's six per acre in what you're proposing for village business three, and it is more than.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
So it's not gonna be six.
You're right.
Probably twelve, twelve or something like that. It's one point nine six, I'm sure he'd give, they'd give a small variance for that point four.
And I mean, he's right about that, that school land that we're discussing.
Right, that's what I'm saying too. That's what I was thinking, you say it's six, and I was thinking about it was twelve, because it's almost two acres, just shorter. But it'd be twelve units.
So if the state is residential, it's, it's just six, and if it goes to village two, it's twelve.
I'd leave it residential.
That way you're protecting the town.
Yeah.
Yeah, hopefully Tom buys it because we could do so.
Well, all I need is water and sewer.
That's what they have. Without the, I think it's a max parking lot here, just going around this lot. It's on the design map, shows this small sliver of this one here. You'll notice it's overlaid right here to this particular. That's supposed to include these parcels. Do you want to include these in the village business two that we're proposing, and we want to include this?
I can imagine if there's a village district two, they're going over there.
Tend to agree. Certainly, we also agree by doing this, the amount of the slithering. So. It depends on how we wanna address that. We know that this line here is drawn based off of a distance off of one's head. It's X number here, there, so there will be some parcels that are.
This is old. That sliver will be above.
Yes.
Except for that last lot, eighty-two.
Because we would cover this.
Yeah.
And this four one one, this one will still be there, this one will still be there.
I think it's just eighty-two.
So. Just wanted to point that out there. But that, that speech you had there, the, the village, we're talking about. It was, we're there, we extended parking, so they were gonna be done, I think, there's only four right there. So if that goes for village business two, then there are a lot more uses that can be grown on. A lot of that, if that doesn't go to park. It can, it can stay residential and still serve as.
So, so just leave it then?
It doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be with village two. It can be, but it doesn't have to be with village two because again, something other than parking on there.
But they're going to, probably it's.
They don't want to park it if they put a condo or something up there, it'd be so close to park. I would think so.
I would say leave it.
Four line address, et cetera, lots.
Yeah, and look, it's not allowed to use, you know, it's listed as a use.
So they would have to, in my mind, merge those lots, so even though it crosses the road, it would still be one lot, and then.
And they probably have to anyways, because village two doesn't allow separate parking area either, for a tenant. So they have to do the same, do the same thing, which they can't immediately, right?
Which would make it, they can merge the lots. What occurs, so we're judging this based off of a lot, that's where buildings, everything, different zones. If a merge lots, one that's residential and ones that village two, what comes of that merge lot with.
So it's a thirty foot rule? Thirty foot more restrictive can go into the less restrictive zone. But again, the parking is not one of those, you put me there, does not, probably have to go through a bearing. It's satellite parking, but again.
Do we?
It's what it's there for, and it probably would not be a big problem again.
We have a provision in the code for offsite parking. Perhaps we should to address that situation.
No, perhaps we shouldn't, leave it for a bearing, this is a bearing support. I mean, they wouldn't have the trouble of getting bearings for, they needed putting it in there, I don't see that those guys wouldn't give them. Leave it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Julie has also brought up about that little skinny strip there, that is there or is there or. A little blue strip right there.
That should not be there.
And it's not.
It'll be there.
So we can leave these lots out of it. So let's see, recap, so we kind of nailed it down that we're, Stefan's going to work on, on shrinking that zone, which is now village one, and it's going to turn into village two with the uses, current uses for village two, but to be tweaked with the special exceptions. Taking some of it out of, of, of used outright and putting it into special exception. I think that's how we have left it. Yeah, so then the village business one that we're talking about here, that we just read before there, looking for North Swansea with all those uses tied right to it down as a. Seem like a start?
Yeah, I think it's a good solution.
Move on to solar, we all got this stuff in there.
How about all the amendments?
The amendments, where are putting in? Well, these are the wording, those are the wording, I think there's just the description of the, of the wording we're using there, did you see something in there that's been quite right?
Yeah, a couple of things that we kind of discussed yesterday. Number seven. Number seven.
Seven. Within the business district permitted uses, one family, two families dwelling, versions that cannot change to put in, which is seen one family dwelling, but considered a permitted use.
That last part, the retail electric charging station, then we turn around and it's the same thing, I'm just.
But those are for two different zones, one of them's commercial industrial, we have to list them, list them separately, changing anything? This, number seven deal with business district, having allow the use, so then we, we go to commercial industrial and produce and allow the use there as well.
Three, I can recall. Actually discussed under amendment seven, having the electric charging station in the business, business district one.
One, I don't think that, it's a business one. Go ahead, that's a village business one, I don't know that we'd be. You said that business and commercial can, wasn't allowed to use, if they want to put them in, fine.
Okay, so in business district one, we're not putting them in, it's only in the business district.
Business and commercial.
Okay, so let's, let's say adopt within business district two or this, or how, how are we going to not have that in business district one?
It's just not listed as a use, that automatically says that it's not a use, that it's not going to be.
Lots.
Do you want to create?
I don't, no, I don't think of lots.
If it's not listed in there, any of our daunting at all, if it's not listed as an allowable use or a special exception.
And then looking at amendment ten.
Movement district, you know, we have. It's just a clerical word there because it was.
I cannot understand what we're saying.
I want to show you, I want to show you. Okay, this is on, on page two of our zoning, that's zoning districts and zoning map that describes all rural ag, residential, and it goes to village business district one on page. Okay, so it goes right from the districts and it names the verlag, residents, village one, business district, commercial industrial, then shoreline protection, then you get way down here to number eleven on page three, and it goes back to village business district two. So we just want to put village business district right with business district or right in there, so it follows right down through, you got your residence, then you go to village business, then you go to business, then you go to, I think it's two. So all it does is move this paragraph, I hear, description, that's all it was, it doesn't have to happen, all it does is move that.
Just puts it in the same.
Put it to read, read easier.
As a voter going into who, looking at that.
You aren't going to, you aren't.
What the hell am I voting, what am I doing?
But then you read down further and it says recommended by the planning board. And they said, okay, that's for me.
Why you lying? Right, I just think, I'm wondering if we could be a little more informed.
And so what it does is the.
You know, for the voter.
What do you want to define, so this format here, do you want those within that goal? The voters got a little bit more analysis, they still explain.
Just to clean it up a little bit, right?
It's the same.
It's a housekeeping thing.
Yeah, fine, and just moving it from one part of the zoning to the other, weren't you thinking, either moving it from one page? Keeping all the village descriptions.
We're putting it on page two instead of page two.
Richard might draft that up the last, we'll take a look at it.
That would be helpful.
So I've already submitted some grammatical edits, just, I don't know, we don't really need to go through them, it's just, it's just sentence structure and.
Watch your stuff.
One thing on amendment five, though, says removes within village business, business district one, the use is permitted by special exception, and it lists them all, gasoline stations, your garage or barter shop, blah, 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 all the way down through, but it also removes nursing homes, lover lodge, and hotel, and hotel from the regular uses, those are just special exception uses, but it, it removes those regular permitted uses as well.
That's amendment four.
Oh, that's number four?
That separated from.
Thank you, yeah.
I have a question. Um, should it be left as something people should go for bearings for, or like, sorry, for example, if one of the multifamilies in village business district one, like, within the confines of their, their site, wanted to put like a, like an EV charger, that should be left as a variant?
For personal use?
Uh, no, no, like for the.
Commercial use?
Yeah.
I'm not in favor of that, I think if for a personal use, if you have, uh, two fam, not a two family, well, you own an apartment, you have a family, because the old Wilbur store, there on thirty two is multi. And if you had something like that on the back, so, you know, that's fine, I believe that's within a use, you know, a permitted use. But something that, uh, we say to the front or more than one unit, you know, commercial, I, I wouldn't be in favor of something.
So they can still go for a variant, is what he was, which I can, you know, that's, we'll just leave it out, if they really want to do it, they can go to the VA for a variant.
So that may answer a little bit of clarity about the terminology, retail electric charging station, so in that scenario, then, if one is a family housing, but a charging station, if it's only servicing those residents, then it's allowable use, if it's not serving those residents, it's intended for other users, that's what we mean, is that right? Is that the, what my?
You're saying, you're saying, when you're, you're trying to clarify the use that isn't in there.
Yeah, yes, I'm trying to re, so clarify the retail electric service.
Does it retail, so yeah, it's more propounded. So I'd say what you're saying is that if it wasn't retail, somebody's going to pay for that electricity, so it's going to be retail, somebody's going to be charging.
I'll give you a second, I think that's what you're saying, I live in an apartment building, we don't have electric chargers. If they want to put in one or two electric chargers for residents only, you're saying that would be.
That's saying, would that, so it's an arrows we're trying. Is that, is that fair to that company?
I think it's, it's fair for the time being, you know, if we get a lot of them looking for bearings, then yeah, the zoning can be changed, you know, okay, it's allowable use, it's popular or something, but for now.
I don't see precedent.
Would that require a site plan modification if they did?
It would.
Because whoever puts it in can keypart it to a resident. You know, so since no one else would be able to use it, to control it that way.
Leave it out.
It's not a problem, go for it.
Okay, what else, Ron, is that everything on the, on the paper part of the amendments you had for here?
Yeah.
Yes, anybody else on that before we move to solar?
So this, this is just a question of the potential order, I had a chance to talk to Michael about this, but wherever we go to the ballot, each one of these amendments is going to be included, that's our own. Yeah, their own section to be voted on. So right now, we're looking at eleven, and once we tack on whatever changes we're doing to village business two, we're looking at something closer.
Yeah.
So we're getting a long range.
A lot there, saying, maybe we could look at it and take some of these out.
Or combine them.
You can't combine them, they have to.
They have to be separate.
So I think it's okay, moving the mask, and we're moving to the next topic, solar, do you want to sit on solar?
Yeah. We should discuss it, so yeah, we are probably on, because you're right.
Keep it off the ballot.
Trying to set the schedule of when we will review it, start the process of putting it into.
So for West Swansea solar, we ended up to require a variance in the site plan as well, correct?
Down here?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, I'm pretty sure it was, yeah, variance, you know, we did do a site plan there.
So I'm thinking, I've had some people ask me, so just do the solar thing, so if they're going to wait until next year, with the way the solar is wrapped it down, that forward, it's allowable for the, it's not a good case, that of course, but it's much easier, is what I'm saying. So I think that if we're pushing this off another year, we're pushing off solar, it's an easier patient, if we're okay with that, then we're going here, so.
We expect a lot of solar operations coming.
So that I don't want.
Let's put it off, I'm fine with putting it off, but making that regard, the variances there, good work again.
What about village business two, because that will likely bring us up to like fourteen, thirteen maybe? Possibly fifteen.
That's what Julie was just saying, yeah.
Well, that's like, that's without the solar, or sorry, with the solar.
We're saying not doing solar origins just because of that.
Yeah, well, like typically they're seeing like towns and cities will stick to like six or seven, so like we're looking at like thirteen, fourteen.
Looking at a lot. Look at the list and see if we can remove something.
Do other commissioners or boards, are they also proposing amendments to their areas?
A lot, did a lot of work, it's a cycle.
Yeah, you're going to see, you're going to see the fire station, you're going to see a fire truck, you're going to see police cruisers, you can see a lot of, a lot of.
You could be looking at twenty, twenty five minutes.
Maybe we move that to next year. I'm going to remove that amendment and retaste that one off of there, let's see. And, you know, we've got the amendment about removing from the business district the special exception of self storage facility. We couldn't forego that and put that one off of there, I'm not. Because eight and nine deal with, I mean, eight deals with the self storage facility, especially checking in business district.
I don't think you want to get rid of ten.
Why not? That's just a housekeeping line, remember? We can leave it there on the zoning.
We can always do that a different year.
I think we should consider keeping eight.
If you need it.
Self storage, right?
Yeah. And we could leave off of, we could scrap number nine. That's about the retail electric vehicle charging station, as I say, an allowable use in the commercial industrial. We probably aren't having all kinds of lot coming up in there anyway, business maybe, but not commercial industrial.
So I don't think that's true, and I have to say that because larger dealerships, I launch those first. It's going to. They install those.
Oh, yeah. At the dealerships you're talking about? Right, they're commercial industrial, aren't they?
Well, isn't that?
There's all this. So we could still leave it off the number. Look, sure, it's been rendered out next year, but we're just kind of limited a little bit, and it's good.
Being so busy, so diligent.
Let's see, now eight in there, let's see amendment seven, talking about one family, two family. Some sort of a decision mistake?
Yeah, it's a legal, you have to.
Yeah, so. Let's see. Go to the bottom up, and number six, and who's been village business, one, the use committed by such exception, no, no. Moving over there, so number five. Got to leave that on there, they all need to the same one, unfortunately they have to be separate, but they, that's the same. Four, yeah, we have to have that on there, three, have to have that on there.
I think, yeah, five and six, I might be able to combine, because it is.
Oh, okay. Nation you. No, wait a minute, I don't know that you can, because special exceptions are after the permitted use of, we mentioned, um, you know, all of our zoning, it's another little, you know, it's another little paragraph on there that says, aside from these uses, these hundred and one here, and one. Special exception, I think it kind of has to be separate there, what do you think?
Yeah, I tend to believe the issue is that.
Let's leave them, we'll, we'll have a long list anyway, but let's, let's leave those. That's it, there, let's see, then the number two, that's another thing that came down. That's another thing that came down. Number two, yes. And let's see, the description. We can leave.
Isn't that what we've done? So if those amendments that came down from the state, that the state's forcing us to do, how come we have to put them on the ballot to have people pretend to vote for something that's a guaranteed, that's going in there anyway?
It's a good question.
You know?
Otherwise our zoning. Otherwise we're restricting.
Yeah, but I'm saying, why can't you just add those state mandated things in there automatically without having it on the ballot if people voting for it is obsolete anyway. It doesn't matter if it gets shut down or not, it's still getting it and going into our rules and regulations.
Yeah, but then you have, you have our rules and state rules that don't match.
You know, the town has to vote for their own. They have the authority for that blue book right there to vote for their own zoning amendments, and even if they turn it down, the state still requires it. The town says, no, you can't have that, and the state says, yes, you can. They go to court and they get it permitted anyways, but the town has the right to vote it down.
Yeah.
It's gotta stay.
Which is.
But if, if the town votes it down, right? Uh, so amendment one.
I was gonna say, so what we can do then is, Stefan, I can take this, we already sent another act of this to determine what, what we're through, this, uh, this two, this one. We can send it to them and say, we're ready to invest as well as possible.
Okay, good, good. So they say amendment one stays because it has to be in there to change. Yeah. We can put two up there.
So, yeah.
Mark, did you have anything to put?
Oh, I was just gonna say. Scary, by the way.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
But if you want, you want to group all the business district ones, I said the following are all related to the changes made in both district one.
Yeah.
The following group the two, and maybe there was a box to vote for all at once, or individually either one, you know, maybe there was some way that people could choose to vote for all of them at once that would make it simple for them.
They can, you can do that kind of.
I don't know if you can do that. At least you could visually group it.
Yeah, you can group that, at least, so it's better, easier to understand anyways, the following.
They're all relating to this one change.
So that'd make it a good idea. People in the public. Yeah, Don, I'm out of here.
Fortunately, we can't do that anymore.
Okay.
Do you want to take a look at the language for West Swansea's, um, some, some of this?
Well, I really got to sleep.
Yeah, I did not police rights.
Redo it and leave out the, some of the block version, what you wrote there.
Ooh, can you specify exactly what's what?
Tell us, see if you want to.
Slide to the right.
So I'm gonna track that.
So let's see, it's gonna be down here.
Yeah.
Second block number sixty-one. Sixty. Block number sixty-eight. Stay there, thanks. Right, stays there. Stay the same, that's okay. Anything else on that? We, we might discuss solar just briefly.
Oh, we can discuss it.
Yeah. We're probably gonna go on with solar for a while, just to see which direction we're going in. Cause I have some time. Probably not, see. This is on the use definitions there. You know, we have the accessory solar. Which, uh. Nobody has it, you already just raised. Or just not discuss it.
Or not discuss it, unless other people want to.
Yeah, Chris has discussed it because we aren't gonna put it on the. Let's move on to other business.
I don't know if we can, wow, can I do this or not? But they sell. Go ahead. Looking at the sub division.
Yeah.
For the retention. On for the. Or is in the old. They have to be there.
They, they did the, uh, right away or why is it not? They did, you know.
What is that?
Something's been. Yeah, it's every. Sorry, the box.
So more.
What are they waiting on exactly? Can I ask that? Are they waiting for the traffic study still?
Point to the zoo base, I go right back to us.
Did we, did the city of Keene live?
Well, did, and they said that it was okay, you know, and pretty much is what they said, yeah, so during bike nuts, but yeah.
They said they had concerns, and then I reached out to the planning board, said, I didn't have any of this involved. Sort of, what were they concerned? I said, did you give those words, and then he told us. The difference.
So the fellow who showed up at the, Mr. Rounds, he didn't?
Not, not.
And the new traffic study, is that?
Yeah, so they did another traffic study, which was submitted at the last plane where we, they noticed that they used the wrong use code. So they go back and ask for a couple of years, I'm Steve. They submit it to us. They also have another project going with Cleveland Mads as well, and so they, hey, it's gonna be a little work, perhaps.
They didn't just end book anyway. Any other business?
So. All the green day four zone. Let's set that, if it's okay with four, and I would like to set that for the first reading in December, with the idea that if a technical sense, no, no concerns. Not that way we can continue either second reading in summer, or we can do it the first week of JAR.
So this stuff lasts, look, so we don't have a, oh, no.
We will.
We have not meeting.
The fourteenth.
Okay.
November twenty eighth.
December fourteenth, then.
Yeah, the select board.
Well, the accessory for the select board, you put it on the line.
Yeah, right. So that is the second meeting, the editor.
It doesn't have to be done with accessories, that doesn't come off of the.
Yeah, I think the RSA still states it has to be given or delivered to the select board second. That's why we can do it that second meeting.
Yeah, so that's gonna be the public meeting?
Yes, that's the public.
We're gonna have a continu- the continuation of base hill.
That same day.
That same day. I'm just wondering. Um, what, but what we order, what we want to do is, uh, we definitely have to have the zoning thing, right? Would we want to do that first, or is that? If the plan gets through?
I would say we ought to do base hill first. I don't, I don't think the zoning is gonna take that long.
That's why, that's why I'm saying, that's why I'm saying do zoning first. Probably very few people, Jay, maybe a couple of other people will show up, and that's it. We've got work on that, so they know what we're doing. They gotta look at it and say, okay, we agree, we got the whole, and, uh, we can get rid of that real quick, because we know base hill might take a little.
Yeah, people.
So we'll get the zoning net, and then if we have to continue that base hill again, we'll at least have his own.
I think we're getting it close to a terminal, they, um, base hill. And I think we can ask for, and probably the continuance of, we need to do it.
Yeah, but they, they did, did the continuation.
The ball's in their part.
Right, but we're still, we're still on a clock.
We, we are, but, you know, that's to restrict the planning board, that's not to restrict the applicant. So, and, you know, he's definitely continuing as the boss there, and I'm seeing really why they wouldn't, uh, affect to continuing.
They want to go forward.
So assuming there's a problem like.
I don't know how much more we have to hire or not on that.
Have to do a formal, put a letter for those, when we get to our deadline, or close to the deadline.
Yeah, I mean, you know, that I have to bring it to me during the meeting in case we need to, but technically, maybe that meeting in December is being saved on one, and they have nine five weeks, because it's.
Okay, any other business this evening? Nope.
Just your surgeon, both.
And then, uh, motion for adjournment.
Second.
Third.
I don't do it when Jay wasn't here.
My Michael New York, it was second, but Steve Malone.
He's on.